The December 20th meeting in Peterstown Township Council to order. Mr. Law, would you please?
Mrs. Merrill.
Present.
Mr. Steigel.
Here.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
All right, so join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item will be approval of transcript from the public hearing of November 22.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is approval of minutes from the regular council meeting held on December 13.
So moved. Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Special reports we're going to delay for a little bit. Representative Mahalik is going to be a bit late. Audience comments. Anybody in the audience have a comment on an agenda item? Not an agenda item.
A non-agenda.
Not an agenda item. Five minutes.
I want to thank council members, especially the departing ones, for all of your fine work. To the council members who are remaining, please keep funding our Peterstown Township Library. I sometimes take it for granted, as not all communities have a building that is clean, inviting, and full of natural light. Albert Einstein once said, "The only thing you need to know is where the library is." My latest checkout slip calculated that I saved over $17,000 using library materials. As a fan of the library, I attended the board meeting last Tuesday. Two members of the library board are departing, and I thank them for their service. I was left with the impression that six applications were received for the vacating seats, and the library director sent two of them to Paul to be interviewed. Is the library board to oversee the library director, or vice versa? Could you clarify this for me? Maybe all six applicants should be interviewed. Thank you.
Do you need your name?
John McCarthy.
Address.
Greenbrier Drive, 105.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to answer that question?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. So what we do on a normal basis, regardless of what board there is, we get applications. And one of the things that we will do is have department heads review them. That is not an indication of who will be interviewed. It's an opinion as to who is a good fit. The determination of those interviews is normally done by my office in conjunction with council. So it may be that we interview three or four, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, we have lots of boards and lots of applicants for boards, so we try to make it a practical process.
And if I could make a comment about that, it's always been my opinion that we should interview whoever applies, partly because it's an effort to apply, and anyone who states an interest deserves time in front of council to explain why. Second, we've often interviewed people for one board to find out they might have an interest on another, which in fact does, it's an efficient process, because then you have someone, so to speak, in the pipeline. So I would encourage council to interview whoever applies. At least give the residents the courtesy of your time for that.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay. Ron Books, 855 Bevot. Just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir.
Please be careful out there. Our friend COVID is still lingering in the hallway. We don't need anyone coming down with that before the end of the year, or for that matter, after the end of the year and next year. So brighten up, stay healthy, and with us.
Thank you for always coming and giving us nice comments. It's good to hear and engage.
Anybody else?
I have two comments that were sent in. I'd like to read those. This is from Jen Grossman, 169 Pleasantview Drive, McMurray. I'm very much in favor of council voting to receive the $2 million grant from the state for our new aquatic center. There have been so many now or never moments for moving forward with the outdoor recreation pool. An outdoor pool was always part of the community plan. A survey of the community indicated the desire for an outdoor pool. The land for the park was acquired, and the site of the pool developed. Interest rates are down, and now we've been awarded a rare $2 million grant towards this project. The time is now. Please accept the grant and move forward. We're building an outdoor recreational pool for the community. The aquatic center would be of great benefit to our community. The second comment is from Frank and Kathy Dano, 106 Walnut Drive, Alicia. Dear council, we'd like to commend Vice Chair Monica Merrill for her years of service on council and for her dedicated representation of the interests of the residents of Peterstown Township P District. We greatly appreciate her diligence and thoughtfulness in ensuring that serving her constituents was her focus at all times, seeking information and clarification when needed as a result of her always thorough efforts to be prepared.
Okay. Let's just thank you, Mrs. Merrill. All right, any more audience comments? None. We move on. Unfinished business. We had a consideration of a salary increase for our township manager. And I think that as we discussed that at our last meeting, there was somewhat of a ambiguity.
Ambiguity.
Ambiguity in the motion that was made, and I think we need to clear that up right now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we increase the township manager's salary from $129,463 to $132,375 for 2022.
I'll second. Any other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, are we unambiguided in the salary?
That you have.
Okay.
So Mrs. Clima can move forward. Sorry.
New business, authorization of the Peterstown Township Police Department to institute a sharpshooter program for the purpose of culling the deer population.
So on September 13, Peterstown Township Council took action to authorize Hugh Prime to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Game Commission for the purpose of instituting a sharpshooter deer-culling program. We've been notified that that application has been accepted and approved. We have had presentations at various times from the police department, and most recently there was a public hearing on December 13 when three residents offered comments on the program. The permit issued by the Game Commission for the sharpshooter program is good for only one year. In my opinion, there's little doubt that there is excess deer population in Peterstown Township. The township has engaged in an archery program to call deer since 2008, and that program alone has not effectively controlled the deer population. To me, the logical next step is the sharpshooter program. And it's my recommendation that Peterstown Township Council authorize a one-year pilot of the sharpshooter program, and at the conclusion of the program, a report be issued containing information as to the effectiveness and cost of the program. I know there are people in the audience who wish to offer a comment.
Paul, at the hearing, I requested a copy of the application that was submitted to the Game Commission. Is that available?
It's not available here tonight. I'll be honest with you, Mr. Steigel, I did not hear that request, or I would have had for you.
Okay, does any council members have any other comments before we get to the audience?
I'd just like to make the observation, I'm not sure if we have an excess deer population or not. I don't know that anyone's counted them. I will admit that they are in a more concentrated area, because we can repeatedly remove their habitat with the residential developments that we're creating, so they're condensed into a smaller area. So it may appear that there are more. I'm conflicted about this program, the sharpshooter program. I've received both pro and con comments from people, and I'm just not sure 100% that it's going to solve the problem we think we might have.
Okay. Anybody in the audience like to comment? Mr. McLaughlin, state your name, please.
Joe McLaughlin, 951 Cagney Drive. I think Mr. Steigel not getting a copy of the application shows the nonchalance by the police chief. I heard it, and it should have been produced. I have a real problem with, you know, when I come to the council for approval of a street or a development or something, I have to have my facts, and I have to have current facts. The Game Commission gave the EQB 30-year-old facts. If I would do that when I came in for an approval, it'd never fly. You guys usually do your job great, and are sticklers, and to the benefit of the township. I think we have a bunch of made-up numbers. When I quizzed them on the numbers of deer that are illegally, no one could answer. They never really wanted to answer how many deer were shot on the farms. They really didn't want to admit that there's a citizen in the township that has a permit to take deer. I would have approached that person and said, "How much do you charge? How do you get paid?" The people that are in charge of this are also the same people that managed the archery program, that it's a failing program, because it doesn't get the attention. I have a problem with that. And I never heard a question answered about the liability with the township with such a thing. And let's face it, in the last five years, I can think of a handful of things. Accidents happen with police departments, bad judgment goes on, and then we're all on the hook for it. I don't see why we don't delay this, get some more facts, maybe go up the rung in the Game Commission and get some more input, see how they could help us. I don't see a problem in delaying and getting more facts. The permit will still take effect when it takes effect. It's my opinion.
Anybody else? Mr. Books? Ron Books, 855 Bevot, Roan. Since last week, I've done a little research on the subject and discussed this issue of liability with someone who is in a position to know quite a bit about it. And I discovered that, or at least I was told, that Mountain Lebanon, when they began their program, they had a couple of police officers come in from Fox Chapel to do the culling. Well, much to what we were presented with as far as it being safe, there was a discharge which struck a home in Mount Lebanon. It was quickly covered up. There's a surprise, and swept under the rug. Again, another surprise. So there is potential danger, and I'd like to get a clear idea of just where the liability lies at. The second thing is, I'm very upset that this culling program was not open to the public. Had the public known that they would be allowed to hunt and use bait, I assure you that the number of individuals applying for the archery permits would have been astronomical. So we again are about to spend over $20,000 on a program which could have been solved by public interest and input. There are some other things which I'm not going to be talking about this evening, but there's quite a bit of concern on my part about just how this program was prepared and executed. So we'll be looking at that in the future. Thank you. Anybody else? Other comments? I'll make a motion to authorize Peterstown Township Police Department institute a sharpshooter program for the purpose of calling the deer population. Second.
Second, and it's for a one-year trial period.
Right. Other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
4-3. Okay. Award of contract under the South Coast Council of Government, Sheik purchasing program for the purchase of two vehicles for the use of Peterstown Township Police Department.
So morally, you would not see these purchases until next year, but one of the things that we all know is that there is a shortage of vehicles that are available, and I think it's in our interest to place these orders. And it'll be well into next year before the bulk of these vehicles are delivered. So with that in mind, it's, the 2022 budget includes an appropriation of $135,000 to acquire vehicles for the police department. The price of two Ford Interceptor utility vehicles under the Sheik purchasing is $73,886, and that low bidder is Jim Shorkey. These vehicles will have to be outfitted later upon delivery. It's my recommendation that Peterstown Township Council award a contract under the Sheik purchasing program for the purchase of two vehicles for use by the Peterstown Township Police Department to Jim Shorkey autogroup any amount of $73,886.
So moved. Set.
Other discussion?
Just a question. What color are we buying this time?
My understanding is that they'll be black.
Okay. Anything else in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Extended with award of a contract under the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of a pickup truck for the use of Peterstown Township Police Department.
So this is part of that $135,000 appropriation that I referenced earlier. This involves the purchase of a vehicle to be used as an undercover vehicle in conjunction with the Pennsylvania State Police Auto Theft Motor Vehicle Insurance Fraud Task Force. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania will be reimbursing the township for the cost of this vehicle. The price of this Chevrolet Colorado Crew Cab under the CoStarz program provided by Colossi Chevrolet is $33,869. So it's my recommendation.
Are we going to have to put anything into it to bring it up to speed?
No.
Move me award a contract under the CoStarz program for the purchase of a pickup truck for use by the Peterstown Township Police Department to Colossi Chevrolet in the amount of $33,869.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a clarifying question. This is going to be exclusively for the use of the officer doing the Auto Theft Task Force?
That is correct.
So that would be the rest of the agreement?
Yes. But the vehicle will be owned by the township, and if by some chance that program ever gets terminated, ownership of that vehicle would remain here, and we would put it to other use.
If we withdraw from the program, we have to reimburse the state for that?
I don't think you have to reimburse the state for, I, no, I don't believe you would have to.
Okay. All right. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Award of contract under the CoStarz program for the purchase of four pickup trucks for the use of Peterstown Township Engineering and Planning Departments.
So the 2022 budget includes an appropriation of $125,000 to acquire four vehicles for use by the Engineering and Planning Departments. The total price of four Chevrolet Colorado extended cabs under the CoStarz programs provided by Colossi Chevrolet is $109,196, and it's my recommendation that council award a contract to Colossi Chevrolet in that amount.
I guess the only concern I have is lumping them all together at once, and perhaps we'd be better suited in having some kind of rotation schedule. Is there any way we could do that at this point?
Yeah, but I'll tell you what, I don't think that that's going to be an issue. These vehicles will not get lots of knowledge on them. They, for the most part, only travel within the township for use by the building inspector, as well as the engineer and the assistant engineer. So I don't think that's going to be a problem.
So in the letter that Mr. Derosky sent us about explaining the rationale for this, he indicated that in the past, we've moved police cruisers over to the use by the administrative staff, and that they've become costly to repair and maintain.
Yes.
So even with them not being used a lot, is it still creating an expense?
Yes. It's been a problem, in fact, to the point that the mechanic in the Public Works Department is concerned about being able to maintain them and operate them safely. We've had problems with things like failure to accelerate from dead stops, failures in the transmissions. I just don't think that it's a good tack to take a car that we feel is unsafe for police use and tell administrative employees, "That's your vehicle." I don't think that's a good idea.
Well, and I'll be honest with you, I've never thought that we've done that. I got the impression that these vehicles were just being rotated because the police needed a vehicle that was in, you know, perhaps better shape. If you're telling me that that's what's happening, then maybe they should have never been moved in the first place. I never got the impression that was the problem, but, and these are only kept here on the township, and they're going to be pickup trucks, not regular SUVs.
They're going to be, yeah, small pickup trucks, yes.
Do we anticipate any problems in the winter with those? Those don't?
I don't think so, not for the, again, for the kind of use that we're putting them to.
And where are they going to be stored when they're not used, just out here in the parking lot?
Just like now, like, you know, police cars are over in that lot. Our vehicles are over in this lot, so.
raising my question, what is the plan for dispersing some of the vehicles that we have parked out in the parking lot?
Those will all be sold under the municipal program, and we've done quite well. I think that's one of the things, I think the actual incremental cost of this is going to be relatively low, because the sale of those vehicles, particularly if we can sell them with the same mileage but less years on the title, I think you're going to get a much higher price than we already get. I mean, Ryan, do you remember what the last vehicles we sold?
Six thousand, was it 6,000? And those were the old Dodge, the old Dodge Charger was like six grand, and I mean, that thing had 120,000 miles on it, and it's all kinds of a problem.
You know, I think that would be a piece of information that the municipality, the residents would be interested in to report back periodically, because it would show how we mitigate the cost and then put that money back into the budget.
Yeah. Like, I mean, we sold our last public works vehicle for $25,000, and both the mechanic and the public works director will tell you that vehicle was done. But I mean, that's just the market right now for used vehicles.
Well, we've sold fire engines, too, from the university, so I think it's a good process.
All right. Is that the motion?
I move we purchase the four vehicles for $109,196.
I'll second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I'd like to interrupt our program right now and go back to our special reports. Associate Representative Mahalik is with us. Has a presentation here.
I sure do. Welcome.
Do you need it in a microphone? I don't know if you're streaming it or anything.
If I could, it's fine.
We're recording. Okay. Is it on?
It's on.
Okay.
On tape.
Perfect. We just came from a different meeting, and the microphone wasn't wired in, and I had no idea.
No problem.
No, thank you for letting me interrupt your meeting. I know you have lots of important business to get to. I had two things, if it's okay, if you don't mind indulging me for a few minutes here. The first, I think this is the last meeting for a few of our council members, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you were properly thanked. I know that there's a lot of time, and sometimes it's a thankless position, and we are so thankful for your service to the community. So I wanted to present you all with a citation. Monica Merrill, thank you so much. I feel like you've been around since, you know, maybe, I'm away from the microphone now. From maybe the, you know, beginning of my foray into politics, and I've appreciated your mentorship over the years, and I know that, you know, in terms of council, and you're always available to your constituents and never afraid to say no and ask the tough questions if it was important to you and your constituency. So we thank you for your years of service to the community, and I wanted to just present you with something from the House of Representatives.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you for your dedication.
Absolutely. Where am I going here? Who's next? Dave. Dave, sorry. Thank you so much for your mentorship over the years and everything that you do for the community, both inside these council chambers and outside of it. You've been, you know, so helpful to me throughout the process of getting to where I am today, and I know that you've been just a tremendous asset to the community and this council, and your leadership has not gone unnoticed. So thank you so much for your years of service.
Thank you for your leadership and for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Jim? I hope, I was looking for a joke for you, and I'm pretty sure you'll know where this came from, but I hope that you will find some extra time for an improvement on your value grab handicap.
Yeah.
But in all seriousness.
Thanks for giving me, even though I know the Janus is.
Thank you. Thank you for your years of service to the community. I know it's not always, you know, a thank, people aren't always out there saying, "Thank you for coming to these meetings late at night and taking time away from your family," but it is appreciated, and it has not gone unnoticed.
Thanks so much.
Absolutely. And I think it's, I need to wire this to walk around. I think it's only fitting that you are all here this evening for your last meeting for the next part of the special presentation, as we're calling it, which is like better than I get to do on a normal day. And actually, this is way better than I get to do on a normal day, because I know this idea was born inside these chambers, and you all have spent just a tremendous amount of time and energy on, you know, the Rolling Hills project and to ensure that it was going to be the right choice for the community moving forward. There've just been a lot of changes in Peterstown Township, you know, over the last few decades, and was this going to be, you know, something that the community would embrace? And with, you know, the debate amongst council and farming out to the community, it seems that it is overwhelmingly supported by the residents, and I know that with the leadership that I'm looking at over here with Paul and Ryan, they've just been instrumental in getting, you know, the beginnings of the project, and, you know, we look forward to, you know, what it entails. My daughter is very excited about it. She's accompanying you this evening. She can't wait to, you know, go on her first swim date with her friends. But it's not cheap, and we don't want to put the community in a precarious situation, and that's why through the leadership over here, there were ways to look for some funding that was out there through the state, and it was going to be available, and we wanted to make sure that it was, you know, coming back here to the Peterstown Township community. So I'm really excited to be giving you this, it's a blank check, but I'm going to fill it in for $2 million tonight from the Capital Assistance Program to go toward that Rolling Hills project. So congratulations to all of you, because it doesn't happen, you know, it's not just me out there advocating for it. It's a lot, a lot behind the scenes, and I don't think that you really know the process until you go through it. Dave, I know you've, you know, been through the process, and it is, you know, quite cumbersome, but I'm really happy to be here tonight and give you all this lovely check. I don't know what they were thinking when they gave you a blank check. My eyes got out of the car.
You can add extra zero.
There's nothing on it, Paul.
We'll take three million.
And I don't even know, how many zeros are in it?
Two commas.
Did I write it in the right place?
One, two, three.
Who writes checks anymore?
I apparently haven't written one.
We take Venmo, Natalie. You can just Venmo.
Do you have any there? More cash, yeah. My Sharpie isn't the best. Were you using this Sharpie?
Yep.
Okay. Sign it.
We'll check the check.
Good plan.
It's not raining, I'll get to it.
Those were some rough pictures, Gary.
Oh, come on. It wasn't your fault. It was raining.
It was. Quite a day. Well, it's been a long two years in the legislature, so this is really hard.
They forget to write.
Did you ever write a check in school?
Do they teach you to write?
In life sciences. On behalf of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Put it to good use.
We will. We'll stand up here a little.
All right, here.
Can you even read it? My check is scratched on there.
That's fine. Probably center between the two. That is a nice.
All right, this will look better in the rain. Even with David.
Wow.
Taking his shots while we can. Taking his shots while we can.
Oh, wow. Got their pictures? Yes, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, don't run away, we have something here. Take this into positive immediately.
It's a brand new Sharpie.
Better endorse that, Dave. We're positive.
Very, very, exactly.
I'm, I'm glad I at least had this, it's usually like a crayon or-
And if I can, you know, the fact of the matter is, Natalie undersells her role in this. The fact of the matter is, we don't know anything about the ARPA program. It takes your representative advocating for, for the township. And my experience with Natalie is that she does this all the time. She has been the best representative we have had since I have worked here, because she not only responds to requests for assistance, she initiates, offers to help when she sees that there's a problem out there that perhaps the state could help us with. And so you, you're looking at a check for $2 million, but the fact of the matter is, if you go up to Rolling Hills Park, this would represent 2.7 million dollars that is up there, and part of that is the multimodal grant that helped the school district and the township construct Rolling Hills Drive, the connection back to Arrowhead Trail has money in from the state of Pennsylvania, and none of that happens without Natalie's help, and, and, and she really does deserve our appreciation.
Thanks, Paul.
Amen. Quite an appreciation, we have a little proclamation from the township for Representative Mahalik. This is, where S. Peters Township is a municipality that takes great pride and sense in community and appreciates state and federal elected officials who've helped foster this sense of community through advocacy, and goes to say that the council appreciates it. State Representative Natalie Mahalik, a township resident, through her tireless advocacy on behalf of the township, has helped make this plan a reality by securing grants totaling 2.7 million dollars from the Commonwealth Finance Authority and the Redevelopment Assisted Capital, Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program to develop Rolling Hills Park. Therefore, be it resolved that Peters Township Council does hereby express its appreciation for the efforts of State Representative Natalie Mahalik to secure grants for various state programs in the aggregate of, aggregate of 2.7 million dollars to develop Rolling Hills Park. So, we have, for you.
Another photo walk.
The first time I, I went and sat with Paul, shortly after I was elected, I said, I'm your new state representative, what do you need from me? And he said, a couple million bucks would be great. So I listened.
She's got to get a photo first. She's a pro. Yeah. See it on Facebook in about 10 minutes. It beats the newspaper.
What grade is your daughter?
She's in fourth grade.
All right. All right, earlier there.
Okay.
My class. Spent a little while.
Find it, we're good seats. I am not.
Thank you.
On behalf of the residents of Peters Township and this council, we certainly would like to thank you very much for your contributing efforts in moving this request through the Commonwealth's bureaucracy, I guess that's, that's what I think of it as being, but we welcome you to come back here and be here with us this evening. I would like to pose a motion that we accept graciously with thanks the check that she's brought on behalf of the Commonwealth's contribution toward Rolling Hills Park and the aquatic facility.
I'll second.
Any discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We are official. Thank you.
Thank you.
And feel free to come anytime you want, Natalie, if you're going to bring $2 million with you every time.
We can give you as many proclamations as we can.
Exactly.
Mr. Paul, since we are on special reports, if I could.
This isn't on our agenda.
I know it isn't. But I did want to, on behalf of the township staff and myself, wish to recognize the service of Mrs. Merrill, Mr. Ball, and Mr. Berquist. Communities are defined by the willingness of residents to devote their time and talents in service of the common good, and nowhere is that more true or more impactful than those who choose to serve their community as a member of council. Being a member of council comes with lots of challenges, there are always tough decisions to be made, but because Peters Township always has been motivated by doing what is best for our community, those hard decisions have kept Peters Township moving in a positive direction. The reward for being a member of council is knowing that you have contributed to the long-term success of your community. Peters Township is recognized throughout our region as a premier community in which to live and raise a family. This is no small part the result of the contributions you've made during your tenure on council. To assist you with your transition to Monday nights free of meetings, I have a small token of appreciation, so that, you know, on one, second, or fourth Monday of the month, I would hope that you could enjoy a dinner with your better half, and I would like to personally thank you for all the support you've given me as a township manager and as the assistant township manager, so.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks, Paul. I thought Mayor was going to get a check for that salary that guy said I was getting.
Here's Monica.
Either of my code departees like to say a couple words?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you very much. It's been in my, for me, it's been an honor, and it's been a pleasure, very much so.
Much as you say.
A few words. Well, I, I would like to say a couple things. It's been, it's been a long time. This evening brings to close a really great chapter in, in my life. I've had the pleasure of serving Peters Township for well over 30 years in one form or another, planning commission, 16 years on the council. In that time, all of us, we've seen Peters Township grow from a town of, you know, 10,000 residents to the 22,000 people that, that live here right now, and we've seen schools built, seen a recreation center built, seen a railroad bed converted into a trail, seen new businesses developed, new roads, we've seen infrastructure. I've been through four comprehensive plans, and they take place every 10 years, think about that. And I'm looking ahead to new development, new facilities, and new opportunities. And that's, that's pretty awesome, but the one constant throughout my time on council has been the great and dedicated township staff that we have, from our manager and, and the staff that, that work in this building, to the police, the fire departments, the road departments, the recreation staff. Without these people, this township wouldn't function the way that it does. I also hope that the people of this township appreciate the value and the quality and the dedication of the people that serve on this board. I, I don't know that there's a better management municipality in the state, so I thank my colleagues for their time and their dedication and their patience. I truly believe that we have all governed at all times with the township's best interests at heart. I wish those who are beginning their service on this council the best of luck, because you're starting in a very enviable position. You've got a great township, you've got a great staff to work with, and you've got great people remaining on the council. And finally, I'd like to thank the people of Peters Township for providing me with the honor of serving, so thank you. All righty, so we move on to appointment of an interim chairman of council. This is an interesting situation for us, because the chairman and the vice chairman are both leaving the council, and we have to have our reorganization meeting first Monday of the year, and we need a chairman to open that meeting until another chairman can be chosen, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Mr. Steigl to serve as interim chairman of council.
Second. Any discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to chairman and chairman. You look thrilled.
You're not going to die between now and today.
Because you're really going to leave us in a pack.
Okay, so the next item is payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, we're approving the payroll for December 24th, which will be 397,000. We're also approving accounts payable this period, 687,000. The largest payments were operations to waste management, workers' comp, and UPMC for employee health coverage. We did pay EPM, 35,000 for the firehouse design, and there's a credit card statement for 17,500, which Mr. Jerosky assures me is accurate, and all charges were for authorized purchases. I move that we approve these as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence, there is none. Reports, does anybody want to discuss any of the reports? Okay, seeing the discussion miscellaneous.
So this is an item that came in just as we were getting ready to issue the docket. The state of Pennsylvania is attempting to enter into a settlement on the COVID cases. I don't know if you've been following this, it's not quite clear to me that that's moving forward, because there's been intervention by a federal judge declaring that the Sacklers cannot escape bankruptcy, escape litigation through the bankruptcy. So I don't know whether this settlement's going ahead or not, but the settlement as, as proposed in the state of Pennsylvania, a portion of the funds are to come to the counties, and the county share is in part dependent upon whether the four communities in Washington County who have populations of 10,000 or more agree to the settlement. So there's no reason for us not to do this. It isn't like this, what's going to happen with this money, if you don't agree to this, it's going back to the state of Pennsylvania, as opposed to being used for preventative programs and, and treatment programs in Washington County. So it's my recommendation that the appropriate official be allowed to execute the settlement agreement, allowing funds to be received by Washington County.
And, and this is for the opioid settlement, not COVID?
Yeah. Yeah, that's why, excuse me, if I said COVID, I'm, I'm-
And this is related to Purdue Pharma?
COVID's on our minds.
Right, and that's why I don't know whether that's moving forward or not, but they're against the deadline, and, and they need this signed tomorrow, so.
I'll move that we authorize the appropriate officials to execute the settlement in agreement with this, the county.
Second.
Any discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a question for, for council. As you are aware, we are purchasing for $2,000 the property that sits at the corner of Maplewood and Valley Brook, and that process has moved forward so that very shortly there'll be an opportunity to us actually acquire it. One of the things that John would like is for council to take a motion to authorize me to execute the, the documents related to the settlement. I've, I've done this in the past, but he would like to be able to see that within a motion of council, and so.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The last thing I want to report is, we've had some luck over the last week, week and a half, with regard to filling some of our positions that have been vacant. We have hired a laborer, we have issued an offer for a full-time firefighter, we have hired a building inspector, we have hired assistant township manager, we did an interview today with a tenant, somebody for the tennis center manager, we have another interview for that position tomorrow. The interview today went well, and, and I know you have at least one candidate that I would feel comfortable making a, an offer of employment to, so we're making progress there.
Way to go. Start off the year with a most full boat, didn't you?
Yeah.
Hey, Paul, I have a question. Did, did we ever hear from the Pitt study on the dam? I thought that was supposed to be in by the end of the year.
We did. They, normally, I've been to these in the past, you go down to the campus and you watch them give their presentation. It was all on Zoom this year, so I watched it, they sent a link. They, they did a really nice job. I don't know that there's any new information that we didn't already know, I mean, I think what I've already conveyed to you, the alternative that they really focused in on was lowering the water level a significant amount, like 12 feet, dropping the spillway, slightly expanding it, replacing the old spillway with a new, and kind of repurposing the lake, you know. They are to come out with a written report. I haven't gotten that yet, they, they said they'd send that to me, so I'll certainly share that with council whenever we get it. And there was actually a Q and A session a couple days later where I asked a couple questions, there was a whole panel of like reviewers from Pitt that asked questions of the students as well, so they did a nice job.
Now Natalie, no pressure, but if you could come up with about $5 million?
Well, over the dam again.
In fact, this is, this is the point that I would like to make. Natalie saw this in the, one of the news articles, and I get a call from Natalie saying, you know what, we need to get together with Guy Resch and Todd Law and look to see whether not there's any money in the Army Corps of Engineers. That's what Natalie does for Peters Township.
Explain to her the quantity of rain that is part of this mandate, so that she is at least sensitized to it. The building code here in Western Pennsylvania, 2.4, 2.6 inches of rain in an hour?
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Natalie, what it is, is the dam is classified as a high hazard dam, so, and it's, it's classified that way, because if it would ever burst, there'd be loss of life or catastrophic property damage downstream, so the state treats these high hazard dams with like the highest level of protection that you can get. So you have to design the spillway for the, what they call PNP event, the probable maximum precipitation, like statistically the most rain we could ever possibly get.
Biblical.
It's a biblical amount of rain, and it's a small watershed, it, the, the design value depends on a number of things. Long story short, it's 17.5 inches of rain in two hours. So, I mean, we would like all be wiped out if we had that much rain, but-
Is it the E regulations?
Yeah, P and P.
Yeah, it's the, it's, it's the, Division of Dam Safety is the regulators in charge of this, and it's not just us in this process.
Everybody who has a high hazard dam.
There's many high hazard dam owners throughout the state that've got a similar letter.
And this is an unfunded mandate issued to whoever those dam owners are. In this case, it's a municipality.
Because a lot of these dams were built a long time ago, and the, the design criteria way back then was not nearly what it is today, but the DEP's saying, you've got to upgrade these dams to what the standard is today, and it's just, it's, it's a tough ask.
And this is already a reduced rainfall measurement, criteria?
Reduced total rainfall, but also a reduced time frame, so the overall net effect is like zero. We still, we still have the same rate, the cubic feet per second of flow to design to, so.
I thought, I thought when they went back with the study.
Well, originally it was 33 inches in 24 hours, now it's 17 and a half inches, but only two hours, so the net effect is-
It's just as bad.
It's just as bad.
And I'm an engineer. In fact, we have a couple of engineers. And it's 30.
We, we don't have an executive session tonight. How's that for a shock?
Do we have a workshop on Monday?
We, we don't have a workshop on Monday, and, and I-
We don't have a workshop on Monday. And I know council seldom gets their own way on everything, but tonight you do get your own way. There you go.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
You get our way.
You're gonna need an extra-large pole to put that on.
38 items for the, Paul, any items for the next agenda?
Oh, yeah.
The next agenda is the reorganization.
Spent my name wrong.
Should be your meeting.
Did I?
The job after all.
You know, Jim, you don't know how many times I looked at it, so if you're telling me that.
It's lost, wrong, because of the lighting.
Congratulations, everyone.
Next agenda is the reorganization. No executive session.
Before you adjourn, Mr. Chairman, I just personally want to thank you, Monica and Jim, for your service. You guys are very welcoming to me when I came on here, and you've always...
I was.
You were.
It's a mistake.
Well, Dave, I will fondly remember the day I ran in the primary, and you came up to me up at the Bible chapel, and you asked me why in the world I wanted to do this. And I still sometimes, I've never been able to answer that question, quite honestly. And I've always appreciated, you know, your willingness to listen to the other side. Monica, the same, we haven't always agreed on everything, but I've always appreciated your viewpoints. And Jim, what can I say? I mean, you know, we've been through some interesting things over the last six years, and I wish all of you well. It's not gonna be the same without you guys here, but I certainly hope that you guys will enjoy your Monday nights and...
And tune us in.
Yes. Yes, and feel free to watch us on television, or come and give some audience comments if you want.
Pass.
Thank you for that, Frank.
No problem.
And good luck to all of you in the new year.
I would just like to say that I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Cozer. I mean, Dave was on, I think, the first time I got elected, and Jim, and I think your husband. And it's been a long 16 years, and we didn't always see eye to eye. But I think for the most part, we all respected one another's positions. And I think that we were all better for it. And I wish you weren't leaving, because I'm gonna miss all of you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody that's remaining on council. Appreciate our discussions. And so our business being concluded, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. And so with that...
We adjourn.
We adjourn.